You are. You have no respect for what the citizens of Troy want when I hear you say, “Well, I feel this way, so I’m not going to vote that way.” This is not about you. This is about Troy. You may have been elected and feel you’re queen of the hill, king of the hill, you can do anything you want because you’re in charge. That’s news for you. You aren’t in charge. You can be here today, but that doesn’t mean you’re going to be here tomorrow. Someone needs to hold you accountable for your actions, and I’m hoping that the city council will. When things like these types of things have been done, this is, to me, a type of ethnic intimidation, and it shouldn’t be tolerated. You people can either be part of the solution, or you can continue to be part of the problem because you can’t undo things that have been done. And in regards to the transit station, this has been in the works for 10 years. We have a very progressive, forward-thinking community, and all of a sudden, a handful of you get elected, and within a month, you think you’re going to have full-time library, you’re going to do away with the Transit Center and everything else that people in this community have been working on longer than you’ve lived here. How dare you? Your personal opinions, whether you like it or not, affect how you treat people. We’ve had some bad goings-on in the city. First, it was a Hooters issue, which was nothing. It was absolutely ridiculous. Then, we had the library issues. And now, Mayor Daniels wants to have a seven-day library. Excuse me, we had a seven-day library. It was inconvenient for parents to drive their children someplace else on Saturday so they could use a library. That’s their problem. I had five children, and I saw that they got where they needed to be, when they needed to be there. Parents today are lacking in that. They want to drop their kids off at their convenience. We’ve got the Transit Center thing going. All of a sudden, you want to boot that out. Wait 10 years from now, when we might need it? That’s like saying everybody can crowd into the little schoolroom until you can prove that we need a bigger school. Doesn’t work that way. And now, this insulting, insulting situation. All I have to say in conclusion is, Robin Beltramey did not lose this election. The citizens of Troy lost Robin, her intelligence and dedication to helping our city become the best, and we really need her now. Thank you.
My name is Elaine Tokarsky, and I want to address the mass transit system, although I am very upset about what you said. I’ve been a teacher for 45 years. I’m now retired, and if I said that as a teacher, or even as a human being, I just couldn’t accept that. I would have been fired as a teacher, by the way. I’ve been a resident of 38 years, and I moved to Troy because of the diversity. I served on both Troy Futuring Committees, and I’m very familiar with mass transit. I’ve traveled 11 countries’ mass transit in Europe, in Canada, in the United States, on the East Coast and the West Coast. And maybe you’re not old enough, but I traveled mass transit in Michigan. They were called streetcars. They went down Jefferson, from Detroit to Gross Point, along Jefferson, from Mount Clemens to Detroit on Grasshut, from Pontiac down Woodward to Detroit, from the border of Detroit down Grand River, and on Michigan, from Dearborn to Detroit. How, why did they stop? They were great. They always got to the red light, and as soon as it turned green, they went on. The bus was way back there, and the cars were still piled up. Why were they? Well, Henry Ford and the other owners wanted to see that they were destroyed because they wanted everybody buying cars. And of course, I’m sure, you can look up that history. And then, we have the gasoline situation. So I am for a mass transit for that reason. Plus, Troy’s tax base is 50 percent business. We had business leave. How do we attract business? Well, we’re now a nation going out to other countries to attract business. Troy can attract business because we’re multi-diverse, and the people coming in are used to mass transit. We need it for business. We need it for employees to be able to go or come to their workplace. We need it for shoppers to come to Somerset and other places in Troy, and the restaurants. The benefits personally, I’d rather take a mass transit down, see a baseball game, football game, go to Ann Arbor, watch U of M win, I hope, and down to Chicago. But my hair is gray, and someday, I’m going to have to face the fact that my car keys are going to be gone forever. If we have mass transit, I can take the Smart Bus, which I give Smart Bus an A-plus in Troy. No better Smart Bus city. To the Mass Transit Center. Take the mass transit, go see the opera, go to a play. If it stops at the DIA, go there. I won’t be locked into Troy because I was wise enough to stop driving for your safety. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Kendall Wachowski, and like so many other people here, this is my first time speaking before the council. But it occurred to me that I could not sit home and just talk around the kitchen table anymore, that if I feel strongly about something, I should come out and tell you about it. I am here to speak for the Transit Center. I do believe that the city of Troy will benefit from this. I do think that probably many years ago, city council sat around and discussed whether or not their city should be part of the new interstate system, whether they should have a fight to get an off-ramp or an on-ramp located in their communities, something similar to what we have here. I do think that as the federal government seems to be putting money into the train system, and hopefully, a mass transit system that will grow from that, that it would behoove Troy to make sure that they stay a part of that by having a transit center located in our city and not have that go to some other city. I do think that having a bus system connected to the train system in the Transit Center would be very beneficial down the road, if not immediately, then as the mass transit system would be developed, is something that we will inevitably have to have in this community if we want to survive. I also wanted to say that I was just going to come to speak about the Transit Center, but then something happened over the weekend that obviously, I felt the need to address as well. And Madam Mayor, I do have to say that I am, as well as all these other people, very embarrassed by your remarks and embarrassed at the light to which it’s put the city in a national press over the past week. It’s also, I won’t say good has come of it, but I did get to sit down and have a discussion with my son on the subtle forms of bigotry and intolerance and free speech, both the rights of free speech and the responsibilities that come along with free speech. And today, I just have to say I’m overwhelmed with the number of high school students that have come here and spoken before you, and if anything gives me hope to the future of Troy, they do. Thank you.
Thank you. I’m sorry, excuse me, sir, 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 I didn’t have you on the list.
I didn’t know where to get on the list.
I’m sorry?
Can I take them out?
Well, no, there are other people that are on the list that want to speak, and if you want to sign up at the kiosk, or after everyone that signed up, I’ll give you an opportunity to speak. We have a long list of people that want to speak. Thank you so much. David Wise, Deborah DeBacher, Dan McLeish, Manesh Bakshi, Charles Montverde, and M.L. Geiger.
Do you have the presentation, or?
No.
Is that?
We don’t.
Oh, so it’s not going to actually?
I thought that we were going to have an opportunity. It says in the council referrals that he was going to have an opportunity to make the PowerPoint presentation if he took five minutes.
I believe it says that in the agenda.
Yeah.
And it has been here since last Monday.
Honorable members of council, under council referrals, L1, you had submitted a PowerPoint presentation by David Wise, and he has the opportunity to speak and show the presentation under public comment for the allowed five minutes, and council has the option to allow him additional time through a waiver of the rules of procedure.
Yeah. I don’t think we’re going to ask for a waiver of the rules of procedure. He’ll have his five minutes, but the PowerPoint presentation?
Is that set up?
Mrs. Bitner?
I can, one second, please.
Point of order. Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Is this proper procedure?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, it certainly was turned in on time. It was submitted prior to noon of today, and again, there is a limit of five minutes, and so he will be held to that as any other public comment is.
Fair enough. That’s fine.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
It’s not typical that we allow PowerPoint presentations at public comment. Are we making an exception tonight?
I believe it was submitted through the petition process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma’am.
It’s public comment, and there have been other occasions where information has been handed out to you. This is a little unique in that it’s a PowerPoint presentation. I know that it has been included in the packet as a referral of Mayor Daniels. Perhaps if, you know, if you wanted to, you could just ask questions. I’m not sure that the speaker actually needs to go through it, but certainly, he does have that option as long as he keeps it within the five minutes.
Yeah, I am requesting that the PowerPoint be presented. I believe it is ready on your laptop.
Mr. Wowe is in the back room. If he could come forward.
He did this last week. Same presentation last week.
You still have it on there?
My name is David Wise, and I am a patent attorney, which means I have an engineering degree and a law degree. I’m currently the chair of the State Bar of Michigan Intellectual Property Section. I do review the future of technology every day. Now, the people who push the Transit Center are those that make a living on control and planning, and they always want more taxpayer money. As we’ve seen, the Transit Center is effectively Troy’s salintra. Now, the mass transit has actually been in decline since the end of World War II, from 50 percent then to less than 2 percent now. The evidence already shows that if you build it, they will not come. Now, this is a very detailed slide, and I’m trying to run through this in my five minutes, but basically, what it shows, this is all government data, and it shows government subsidies have increased almost 60 percent since 1960, while ridership revenues have fallen. Now, that’s just more taxpayer money that goes to subsidize. More recent trends, again, recent data, mass transit costs have increased 17.8 percent, while consumer prices have only increased by approximately 4 percent. Now, this is in contrast to users of roads who pay for them. License fees, tax, gas taxes, vehicle registration, they, people who drive on roads actually pay for them. And that’s in contrast. Here’s another slide, again, more data that shows how motorists are being cheated to subsidize mass transit. An example being the Smart Bus system. For example, the Smart Bus system siphons over $100 million a year from your annual road budget, yet their deficits continue to increase on the bottom. Now, government bureaucrats and unions don’t care about these subsidies because they are the ones who benefit from them. You can look, Ann Arbor, Grand Rapids, Flint, these people who manage these sort of transit systems are making upwards of $200,000. You have failures of mass transit across the country. Basically, it would be cheaper to give each person a luxury vehicle than pay for the mass transit systems as they currently are constituted. Bullet train to bankruptcy, Ohio, Wisconsin, Florida, they’ve all refused high-speed rail funds as they don’t want to put their taxpayers on the hook for projects destined for insolvency. California, high-speed rail in California, California is already bankrupt, and the high-speed rail will actually double their indebtedness. Foreign failure, we’ve heard about foreign countries, people traveling there, but across the board, the foreign systems have been failures. In fact, Japan privatized its rail line in 1987 because the government transportation management was such a failure. China, China, it’s incredibly disgusting to me that anyone would hail Communist China as a model for the U.S. I mean, no surprise, corruption, carelessness, that’s been the result. You can see the newspaper articles. And even for those people who believe in saving energy, you can see from a BTU perspective, mass transit does not do so. Facts, there is no evidence whatsoever that supports these fashionable platitudes that we’ve heard about mass transit centers, none. I haven’t heard none whatsoever. Now, after decades of annual subsidies and the tens of billions of dollars, mass transit is completely insignificant, even with subsidies 100 times greater than roads. So who really wants this mass transit center? Well, I, yeah, exactly. I attended, I actually attended, I actually attended a forum that pushed for the Transit Center. The sponsors are right there on the bottom, for example, TRU and Moses. Who are they? Well, TRU is basically a public sector union front group who, as you see, sides with the Occupy Wall Street people who left over 30 tons of garbage in L.A. Moses, Moses, again, more bureaucrats and government unions who are pushing it, along with the typical left-wing agitation groups, which we hear tonight, such as CARE and the Gemilio Foundation.
Please, please, quiet, please.
They who want to spend our tax money the way they see fit. Transit Now objectives, basically, I attended this forum, as I mentioned. It was Saul Alinsky, 101 Social Justice. Their goal is essentially to force on upscale communities a bus station. The Transit Center is a glorified bus station. 209 times a day, buses will come through the Transit Center. So what does a Transit Center actually look like? All you have to do is look at Troy, basically. It’s a magnet for crime. Yeah, it’s a magnet for crime. I’m sorry, the truth is the truth.
David, that’s your five minutes. David, thank you.
All right. Just to wrap it up, you know, the heroin express, that’s what the police call the Transit Center.
David, point of order, listen, listen, excuse me, the man has a right to speak.
With all the interruptions, I think I should at least get another 30 seconds.
If you could please wrap it up, Mr. Wise.
Okay, I’ll wrap it up. Birmingham already wasted $300,000. We’ve heard today, Troy has already wasted $420,000. How much tax revenue are you willing to give up from private sector developers to basically build a glorified bus station?
David, please.
Okay. Last slide. All right. Thank you. It’s still taxpayer monies.
Thank you. The man has a right to his opinion. Ms. DeBacher, Mrs. DeBacher?
I’d just like to say that I don’t think that you’re controlling this meeting very well. I’m here to speak in opposition to the Transit Center because of all the things mentioned in the previous speaker, there’s a lot of data there he couldn’t go through, but what I saw is where he’s talking about 290 buses that will go through that area. That area cannot handle it. I live off Coolidge, and I drive Coolidge between Maple and Big Beaver. That is a narrow, narrow road. You can’t even, in some of those turnarounds, you can’t even turn around and stand there without blocking the traffic from one side to the other of that road. The medians are way too narrow. So you have not factored in the cost of maybe eminent domating some of Somerset Apartments, eminent domating some of those houses in Birmingham. Will Birmingham even let you? Because they are totally out of it, they want nothing to do with it. Are they going to let you widen their side of Coolidge for 209 buses trying to make a left turn to get to where everyone is saying these are going to go down Big Beaver to bring people here for work? That’s just not going to work, not at all. So you’d better put in a couple more million dollars in there to widen that road because it’s just, as it is now, is a very crowded road. The other thing is, you can see all these boondoggles, you can see where the governor of Florida told them, “We’re not going to put our people under that.” Wisconsin did the same, Ohio did the same. You shouldn’t be exposing us to that. If all this goes through, it’s going to estimate it costs $750 million for the state to subsidize what they want to bring in, their expected portion of the cost. Our state doesn’t have this money. All this is going to be, that’s going to be sitting there empty, or with hardly anyone there, and it’s going to be a big waste of money. How can anybody even use this a lot when you’ve got only 160 parking spots? You need a lot more than 160 riders a day to make this worthwhile. If you’re thinking of something like the massive crowds that stand to wait to get on the subway in Washington, D.C., there’s hundreds at each stop waiting to get on. So you’re not going to have a place for these people to park. They’re going to be coming from their suburbs, their subdivisions in Troy and going over there, and where are they going to park? This is not going to work, and it’s a waste of federal dollars, it’s going to be a waste of our tax dollars to maintain it, that kind of thing. So I would appreciate if you would not support it for those many reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLeish?
My name is Dan McLeish. I’ve lived and worked in Troy for the past 40 years. I’m a builder and developer. My office is right down the street on Big Beaver, and we build all over the metropolitan area, but primarily here in Troy. The question is, Troy making a wise choice in taking this federal money, which may come from the federal government, but it’s still our tax dollars? Is it your tax dollars, all these people’s tax dollars, and my tax dollars? Will this turn out to be Troy’s salintra? Where is the demand for the bus station, train station? As a businessman, I am sure what I do is cost-effective, or else I will quickly go out of business. We build houses, offices, office buildings, develop properties. If the village of Metamora came to me and offered me an interest-free loan to build an office out in, or apartments out in Metamora, would I be willing to do it? But I would have to evaluate my options, the demand, how much interest, the long-term, or just passing interest that people would have in that area? What happens if the selling period, during the selling period, no one rents or buys, or rents my offices or apartments? What is the long-term future of the Metamora demand? If it goes bad, I am on the hook. If it goes bad, Troy is on the hook here, okay? You’re going to have the snow removal, the maintenance, you’re going to have the gas, electric, the taxes that you’re missing, the lawn service. Even if it was interest-free, I would still, it would still be an obligation if I had those apartments and office buildings in Metamora. Being a home builder, there’s lots of bargain-priced lots out here. 25 cents on the dollar, I can buy them for. I have, developers asked me to come over and build a house. If I build that house, what do I have to do? I have to see if it’s, do I have to pay anything until the house is sold? He says no. My dollars, though, I have to use to construct it, hold it until it’s sold while paying taxes, the cost of construction, the maintenance of the utilities, the loss of income on my invested dollars. That’s what Troy would be doing at the same time. I’m very careful what I have to do with my money because I’m not going to get any more of it if I don’t do good with what I have. The old saying is, we could go broke on good deals. And this sounds like a good deal because we’re getting a bunch of money from the federal government, but that’s your money, not the federal government’s money. That’s your money and my money. I do not see any demand for a transit station. When was the last time you saw a Smart Bus packed to the gills that you couldn’t get any more people in it? You’re lucky to see five or six heads in that bus as it goes by. The railroad closed three of the stations. There was a commuter line going down to Detroit, and they still have the one in Pontiac, they still have the one on Royal Oak. If you want to take the train, go down to Royal Oak or go down to Pontiac. You’re still going to have to get a bus, or a taxi, or something when you get off there. Even getting over to the Troy train station, or if people are getting off there, or the bus station, how are they going to get over to wherever they’re going here in Troy? They still need a car or some other means of transportation. Cost is huge, three to four times what the private sector could do, and what this private sector would pay. Just to give you a quick three examples, Washington, D.C. spent $10 billion on mass transit, and their ridership is down 10 percent. Dallas put in four rails in the 1990s, and their ridership is down almost, well, the growth of jobs was 96,000, they lost over 3,000 riders coming onto their four train lines. Fulton, Oregon, lost, and they are one of the most progressive, what we would call progressive cities in the country, lost 20 percent in their ridership in the last few years. Let the private sector develop and get some tax revenue off that piece of property. I’m almost done. Let the revenue come to the city. There’s no demand for mass transit. Washington, like I said, spent $10 billion, and it’s down 10 percent. The Smart Bus service, it’s a tremendous cost to the taxpayers. They’re going to, it’s over $100 million, and there’s $50,000 they’re going to run in the red over the next four years. Is Troy making a wise choice in taking this, our tax money, and will they wind up maintaining a non-productive, empty train station like Detroit’s Grand Central Station? As a businessman, I must vote no. And one last thing, just in closing. This has to do with the issue today. 1959, we had Bible clubs in the Detroit high schools. They were kicked out.
Your five minutes is up.
Yes, 1969, I came back from Vietnam. I spent four years fighting for my country, and they spit on me. But they asked my forgiveness 20 years later, and I accepted it. And all I’m saying is to the people here, when somebody asks your forgiveness, you need to forgive them. Jesus said you need to do it 70 times seven in one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I thought Manesh Bakshi was next?
Yeah, that’s fine.
Thank you.
Mayor Daniels and city council members, and Councilman Duttis, belated happy birthday. Anyway, here is what I want to simply comment on. I’ve heard a lot of different things about the Troy Center, and it seems to be pretty amazing that people are not paying attention to what is going on, not only in this city, not only in the state, but also all around the world. Some of you might have seen the headlines today, which says, “S&amp;P is looking to downgrade 17, all 17 of the European nations,” and I hear a lot about it today from people saying, “Hey, those people who are used to mass transit in Europe, well, they might want to get used to devaluing currency as well. They might also want to get used to the downgrading to a point that the interest rate and inflation and recession will be a lot more as well.” So let’s take some simple look at the facts which are happening. Is this the time for us to really take on a boondoggle to nowhere? Is it the time when we should really be evaluating more projects, government-sponsored, which are totally ill-conceived and usually over the budget? My sense is, this is not the time to do it. This is not the This is not the time for us to take on gambling risk. I know the government might be providing some money, the same government, which trusts me, in the next 12 months, we are looking to be in a much deeper hole because we were bailing out Europe in the last week for $600 billion. If that's what is going on, I just want to ask each and every one of you to pay some caution. I think Mr. Henderson said, "We need more train lines before," and that's why we should not be putting the cart before the horse. Mr. Wade Fleming was right about mentioning $8.5 million as well as maybe a crime-infested area. I think it is very much clear that Troy does not need to take on another obligation which it can ill afford. And I know the people who have been elected recently, three of the people I'm very proud of because I know they are serious about a constitutional government, they are serious about the responsibilities of the government, and I know they are in it for the state, for the city, for the country, and not for themselves. Thank you for the great job you are doing.
Thank you. Charles?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just come up a little bit more. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Charlie Monteverdi and I work in the Government Affairs Department for Amtrak in Chicago. I am appearing during this public outreach session on behalf of our partners at Michigan DOT to voice Amtrak's support for the Troy intermodal station project. Throughout Michigan and across the country, the railroad station serves as a gateway to the over 500 communities Amtrak serves. Amtrak has set all-time ridership records in eight out of the past nine years, a 44% uptick since 2000, including this most recent fiscal year of 2011, when we carried 30 million passengers for the first time in our company's history. The current Birmingham facility that would be replaced by an intermodal station in Troy was part of this trend as well, with a record 24,121 passengers getting on or off the train in Birmingham over the past year. This boom in ridership is due in no small part to the proliferation of new multimodal stations across the country, similar to the opportunity Troy has before it right now. Combining multiple modes of transportation into one facility has allowed for connectivity never-before experienced in our nation's haunted history and has funneled an ever-growing traveling public into a single area in many American communities. The option to commute to and from a place of employment or leisure destination while being productive and relaxed on the way there has led to both a commercial and residential renaissance in areas surrounding multimodal stations. The current Birmingham facility is served six times daily by Amtrak's Wolverine Service, and this is the service that would, of course, move to the Troy intermodal station. Ongoing improvements to this corridor that I'm discussing include, but are not limited to, eliminating rail bottlenecks near Chicago and the Indiana State Line, speed increases to 110 miles per hour on the Indiana to Kalamazoo Amtrak-owned section of the railroad, and the state of Michigan acquiring and upgrading the railroad running from Kalamazoo to Dearborn. These investments have positioned your Wolverine Service and the rail corridor it uses to become the premier passenger railroad corridor west of the Appalachians. We are in an unprecedented era, excuse me, we are in an era of unprecedented investment in passenger rail across the Midwest and nation, and Michigan is at the very epicenter of this investment. I've made sure to continually use the word "investment" here because that's just what these improvements are. And it's precisely what building this intermodal station would be, an investment. Transportation investment has been the backbone of our nation's grandest economic renaissancees. The American people investing tax dollars in transportation is nothing new, nor is it unique to Amtrak. For the passengers on our trains, oftentimes their only images of the cities we serve is what they see out their window, excuse me, when the train stops. These passengers can continue to see a bus shelter station in Birmingham, or they can take a fresh look at Troy and its brand-new intermodal station. They can make note of a restaurant they want to come back and try, or a unique store where they can get that hard-to-find gift for a loved one. Amtrak is hopeful that the city will choose to accept this money and bring rail passenger service to Troy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. ML?
The Hooters situation has already been mentioned. The library has been mentioned. But now, we've been ridiculed on national TV news. As a resident of Troy for over 44 years, I am beginning to think I'm living in the midst of a syndicated cartoon series. I propose at this time and maybe plead with the total Troy administration, the total city administration, to put their personal agendas on a secondary consideration, but put the overall best interest for the entire city of Troy as the emphasis. Please bring the best for Troy back as soon as possible.
Let's have order. Please, please. We want to get through the evening. We might like to take a break. Would the council like to take a break at this time? Or would you like to wait and continue until we're finished with the public comments?
Break.
Want to take a break? All right. We're going to take a break for five minutes.
Five minutes?
Thank you, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Meeting's coming to order again, please. We'll continue with public comments. And we are, where'd my list go?
Denise Brogan.
Denise Brogan. Yeah, I know, but... I thought it was, I thought we were down here. Yeah. Here we go. Denise Brogan, Joshua Shirley, Gordon Shepke, Amy Weber, Jamie Lyons-Eddy, Michelle Fox, Toby Goslin, Barbara Yagley, please. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Denise Brogan-Kater. I'm the Executive Director for Equality Michigan. I am here speaking as a Troy consumer. My wife would say probably too much of a consumer at the Somerset Mall, but then that's another story. But most importantly, I'm here speaking as the Executive Director of Equality Michigan. We are the statewide nonviolence and advocacy organization for gay and transgender citizens in Michigan. As a member of that community, I am especially sensitive to the impact that hateful and bigoted speech has on people's real lives. I see every day the impact of anti-gay slurs and anti-transgender slurs at school, at work, at where we shop, at walking down the street. It is the outward proof of a person's inner contempt for who we are. And it often expresses itself in actions from bullying, and I'm so happy to have listened to the youth tonight. They were so eloquent. I almost feel like I shouldn't speak.
Please, please. She's losing her time to speak.
To harassment, to job discrimination, and even to violence. This is why anti-gay slurs are and must be intolerable. It is not simply a matter of respect, which should be sufficient. It is also a matter of safety. When I saw what you posted on your Facebook page, Mayor, I was shocked and I was offended. Your choice of the slur "queers" is evidence that you harbor deep animosity toward the gay community. Imagine instead if the word had been a slur against another minority. Would you or anyone else attempt to defend it? And yet you did attempt to defend it as just one word. And you said that you were merely expressing your personal belief that marriage is between one man and one woman. You seem to believe that it is okay to degrade and dehumanize a class of people if you were doing it based on a sincerely-held religious belief or moral conviction. We've heard those words before. Just last month, our state senate tried to protect school bullies based on the same justification. They passed a bill that exempted anyone from responsibility for bullying if it was based on a sincerely-held religious belief or moral conviction. It was, in essence, a license to bully. It was a national embarrassment. And Mayor, today is an embarrassment for the city of Troy. You have besmirched the reputation of this very fine city, hiding behind that same excuse. And please, let's be clear, this is not about marriage equality. I would be happy to have a conversation with you about marriage equality, and indeed with anyone, at any time, public or private. But that's not what this is about. What this is about is the use of a slur that shows contempt for gay people, people that you were elected to serve. And the sad thing is, I really believe, I really truly believe that if you could see us, if all of us could stand up... us, if all of us could stand up, if every gay person that lives and works in this city that enrich your life every day could stand up and you could see that we are your neighbors and your coworkers, you would understand why it is wrong to call us names and wrong to make excuses. Mayor Daniels and especially the Troy City Council, the limelight is on you. This is your moment. Make the best of it. You can do better, and the people of Troy deserve better. This is your opportunity to prove that actions speak louder than words. It is time for you to show that Troy believes in diversity and inclusion. It is time for you to work together to pass a municipal ordinance prohibiting discrimination of all kinds in your city, including on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity or expression. We at Equality Michigan are ready to help you make that happen. Take us up on it. We can help you. We can help this city regain its fine reputation, a reputation that it deserves. The businesses deserve this reputation. We can help you with it. Thank you.
Joshua?
Joshua, yes. First of all, I'd just like to invite all the council members to participate in our discussion. I do have a link. I would anticipate all of you to make some comments, if you do have a Facebook page, if you know people that have Facebook pages. Just, I would really encourage that you participate in our discussion, if I may approach. I'm just going to pass out some flyers.
You can give the brochures to the clerk. Thank you.
Secondly, I did not plan to talk about this, but I would like to ask all in opposition of public transit, simply where were you preaching this debt during the Bush tax cuts? I don't remember hearing anything about our debt during the Bush tax cuts, so I don't really see how debt is an issue when we're talking about public transit. On a side note, obviously, we're here for very many different reasons tonight, as I mentioned, public transit, community reinvestment, even gay rights. I believe the important thing to recognize is that, as human beings, we are also very different. Metro Detroit, Troy especially, is a thriving, diverse community that welcomes many viewpoints and opinions. And it's come to my attention that Janice Daniels, the city's current mayor, her support and her supporters have shown little interest in building upon these differences, and instead have negated the importance of community entirely. This is evident in both her stance in public transit and her stance on human rights. To quote Brenda J. Allen, a well-respected linguist and author of "Difference Matters", "If you accept..." This is her quote, "If you accept the premise that difference matters, you may need to revise your attitude towards difference." I invite you to think of the difference as a starting point for understanding the riches of life as unique manifestations of the possibilities of humankind. In other words, try to appreciate and value the difference," end quote. That is a challenge I pose to the Troy City Council today. I encourage you to overstep Daniels and stick up for what you believe and know to be true. That difference does matter, and you will not tolerate that, those that try to shut it out. Fight hate in our local government and secure a safer community for all of Metro Detroit. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's let the people speak. Gordon Shepke, please.
Mayor and council, Gordon Shepke, I'm a resident for 42 years. I grew up after the war years, and with rapid transit down and going down into Detroit, because I grew up in Ferndale. And we used to use rapid transit. And the main reason that rapid transit was so well-used at the time was because it was after the war, and people either had one car, families had one car or no car at all. And I've seen the companies that provided these transit systems go down one after another, either for reasons of inconvenience, crime, or the destinations when Detroit used to be a real vital and thriving community. Now it looks like it's been bombed, like in Hiroshima and Nagasaki, like I said last week. There's not many places to go where you can get off and you don't have to take other mode of transportation to get to destination. The six-train-a-day Ponzi scheme proposed for Troy alone to pick up the financial burden will never be good for the residents of Troy, will never be good for the businesses, or even for those...even for the people who think that there's some bragging rights that exist in their mind. Things aren't there. Businesses, when they are considering reinvestment in their companies, always factor in their payback of investment. There is no payback here, just a consistent drain of money and resources. The only major metropolitan cities around us are in physical and financial shambles. Detroit's talking about a receiver, state receiver, or Chapter Nine. There's also a lack of desirable destinations to go to and shop and dine in Detroit, and their infrastructure's been devastated, decimated, and the crime rate has gone through the roof. They leave little desire for a person to want to travel there and spend their money. Instead of importing customers for Troy businesses from Detroit, I think it's going to be importing possibly homeless or crime to our city that I really, I've lived in 42 years and love. We don't need a people mover scenario in Troy like in Detroit where their taxpayers subsidize each fare, for every dollar fare, for about $10 of taxpayer money. Follow Birmingham's reasonable leadership and stop this unneeded and unwanted millstone of debt and an ongoing financial burden for the city of Troy. This is a millstone around the neck of the taxpayers. As a temporary elected representatives of the people, fulfill your responsibilities fiduciarily and fund the needed core services for the city, for the residents. Don't further burden Troy's residents that now and in the foreseeable future will reduce their quality of life and their personal financial services. Remember, government only can give away money that they take from other people. So money in your hand is sacred money, and make sure you use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Please. Amy?
Good evening. Good evening. How are you? Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. We wanted to show up today to give you just a look at our family. We are a gay family here in Michigan. We are legally married. This is my wife, Tina. My name's Amy. This is Logan. And this is Aiden, our biological daughters. And I always like to think of challenges like this as opportunities to grow. I know you probably regretted the second that came out. Oh, my God, what did I just do? I'm a public figure. I have a lot of responsibility to the people that I serve. But I also think it's a wonderful opportunity for you to turn this around and to look at the faces of...and remember, this is why we allowed them to stay up so late past their bedtime, to come up and let you see them and say, they go to school with kids that have two moms and two dads. They go to school, majority of their friends have a mom and a dad. And we talk every day about different families and different types of people and teaching respect and kindness. And that is the heart that beats in our home, is about being kind, about choosing love over everything. And when I told them about your comments, when they wanted to know why we were coming today, they wanted to do something for you, and that was to draw you a picture. And so I have two tiny pictures for you. One just says "Love," from my daughter, Logan, because she wants you to remember that, in the end, love is all that matters. No matter what you're doing in your life, if you can look at it through the lens of love, you will do the right thing. The second one is two little girls in a house. I'd like to know where your mothers are in this picture. And it says "Love," and it says "Only answer." And I hope that you take these as gifts from Logan and Aiden, as a reminder that mistakes happen, you can always turn them around. And I would love, love, love to see you out at the next Gay Pride, leading the march and saying, "I made a mistake. These are my brothers and sisters, just like everybody else, and I will always support you." And all the people of Michigan.
Thank you, George. Jamie? Jamie Lyons-Eddy?
Hi. My name is Jamie Lyons-Eddy. I'm a 15-year resident of Troy. I'm here to read an open letter from my son to Mayor Daniels. Dear Ms. Daniels, my name is Max Eddy, a Troy High alum, 2004, and a proud Michigan native. Though I left this state in 2008, my roots go deep, and I often tell my friends and family about where I am from. My parents still live in Troy and have raised my brother and sister within a stone's throw of the beautiful Marshall Land near Leonard Elementary School. I'm amazed at my surprise while perusing online news feeds today that I should see not only my ancestral state, but also the town where I spent many of my formative years in the headlines. Unfortunately, the reason was that you posted the following message to your Facebook wall on June 25th of this year. "I think I'm going to throw away my 'I love New York' carrying bag now that queers can't get married there. I was, quite frankly, appalled and ashamed that such hateful, bigoted speech would come from the woman elected as the mayor of Troy. You were elected to represent the interests of an entire city of people, one which, I assure you, contains an ample number of homosexuals. That you would so easily dismiss them as apparently unworthy of basic human dignity reveals you to be not only unfit for your job, but raises severe questions about your moral character. Shame on you. I strongly suspect that anything I say will not change your mind about homosexuality, that no matter how many happy, loving, same-sex parents or honest, hard-working gay members of the Michigan workforce you meet, you will not be able to see past your bigotry. So I will not waste my breath or your time, and instead ask that you resign from your position immediately. If you cannot see people as equals, I cannot imagine how you believe yourself fit to act as mayor. What's more, you've already brought shame to your office and to yourself. Anything you do from this point forward, no matter how worthy, will be stained with the hatred you carry. Sincerely, W. Max Eddy. P.S. I've lived in New York for over a year now, and I assure you that this city doesn't need the love of someone like you; neither does Troy."
If you'll hold your applause. Michelle Fox, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for allowing me to speak. I'm not a resident of Warren, but I'm not a resident of Troy, but I do live in Warren. What I read on your Facebook page really dug into my heart. The statement you said, "You are an elected official, thus you represent all the people of Troy." Doesn't matter if they're gay, straight, trans, all the people of Troy. And you slurred a segment of that population. I'm a transgender woman, and I've seen what hate and what hate speech can say. Two weeks ago, we had our annual Transgender Day of Remembrance, and because of hate speech and words like queer and the context that it was used, 270 transgender persons were murdered throughout the world. We had a girl here in Detroit, Shelley Moore, who was murdered due to indirect hate. What this does to young people, it gives them permission to slur other minorities, whether they be gay or other minorities, whether they're Muslim, Jewish. I'm a victim of hate, being transgender, but I'm also a victim of hate when I was in junior high, of antisemitism. Yes, I am Jewish, and I am proud to be Jewish. But I really, really dug my heart when I read your statement. If you are sincere about your apology, I urge you to take up and talk to Denise and Unity Michigan, Equality Michigan, and meeting with your city attorney to draft a human rights ordinance to ban discrimination based on orientation, race, disability, gender identity, sex, and so on. I saw, I don't know if it was a tweet or a text, just a little while ago, and the shame that's been brought on this city, let alone the state of Michigan. Keith Oberman, on his show tonight, declared that Janice Daniels was the second worst person of the world. And I could not agree with him more. Yeah, you're sitting there, and you're smug, and you're smiling at me, but I don't think you're really taking me seriously. I don't think you're taking any of us seriously. If you were tomorrow, you would instruct a city attorney to draft an ordinance for human rights to ban discrimination based on our gender, identity, or sexual orientation, because that's what's important. The unemployment rate within the gay and transgender community is extremely high. So I beg of you, if you are really sincere and you really want to make a difference, yes, come to our Pride parades. Come and march with us. But also do something right. Do something right for the citizens of Troy and Michigan. Thank you.
Please, hold your applause. Toby Goslin, please.
Good evening. I had a speech prepared, but there's nothing that I could say that would top what I've heard tonight. This has been such a painful night, hearing people speak their truths so eloquently. I'm proud to be a resident here, and I'm embarrassed and I'm shamed of you, Ms. Daniels. But one thing I can say, watching you, every time somebody said a heartfelt truth, the parents that are speaking of their children, you have not experienced that, nor have I been on this, but I do have friends that are dealing with the same situation. I know you know right from wrong. You're flushing red every time somebody touches that nerve. I truly believe, in the beginning, I didn't really know what you meant when you used to say "stuck on stupid." I know you're not stuck on stupid, but I have a funny feeling you were put into this position by the Tea Party group that is invading our city here. And I really believe, in watching you tonight, that that's not who you are, and I think you're over your head with your skill and with your demeanor. And I'm watching you, and I'm being very mindful, but I'm also asking the other council members, when we leave tonight, to sit and talk with each other through unclosed doors. I don't know how you can lead our city from here forward. You cannot change your deep truths and your beliefs. And who is Mr. Whiz Wise? Who is that man that you're playing with? On Facebook, he's also a very ugly gay basher. And, you know, amongst us, I just have a funny feeling, I'm going to put my glasses on, and I don't want to say anything offensive or inappropriate, but your intentions worry me. What's next? Are you secretly a member of an extremist group? White supremacists? KKK guys without their hoods on tonight? I see some people in here that I'm really uncomfortable with, and I'm watching the behavior, but I know you know better. And I am going to be straightforward. I ask for your resignation tonight. I believe that you are not capable of running the city of tomorrow today. You have brought us so far back with this. I'm an educator. I've dealt with the pain that you heard the psychologists and the social workers talk about, and we have kids in school that are talking just all over the place. How are you going to go out in public and face them? What do we do with you now? I really believe you need to resign your position. And I asked the council, and I asked city management. This is very serious, because if it isn't the gay people, it's going to be the Polish or the Jewish or the Muslim. Your hatred and your prejudice is intolerable, and it needs to go. And I feel really bad for you. I'm not part of this roar behind me. I'm so proud of the people that showed up tonight. Where were they when we had the election? How did we elect you? Where did you come from? I don't know. But I ask seriously to be mindful. I really think you need to resign as mayor. It's not a game, and it's not funny. And to the residents of the city of Troy, show... And to the residents of the city of Troy, show up and vote. What were you thinking when you elected this candidate? I watched Robin Beltramey. I watched and listened to Ms. Daniels and Mr. Teetz on my front lawn and Maureen at meetings, and I'm looking at you, and I'm asking you, where do you go from here? What do you do with this? This is really ugly and dangerous, and it doesn't stop here. I really ask with all due respect that you resign your position so that we don't have to start gathering signatures for a recall. Thank you.
Barbara Yeagley, please.
Hi, I'm Barb Yeagley. I've been a resident of the city of Troy for 24 years. I don't have much experience with homosexuals, a little bit in college. They were always rather jocular, and I first experienced, you know, I got an inkling of the pain that they go through when I saw the chorus line back in '79. It was a play, and I was very deeply touched by that. So I, you know, I don't appreciate, I don't understand and appreciate fully the abuse that they experience in life. The only thing that I could say that I experienced that's comparable, my version of it, is being a Roman Catholic pro-lifer and stuff that gets said to me regularly by people who don't share my view and call the people that I'm trying to protect parasites. When I looked at the posts, you know, I don't go that much on Facebook, but when I looked on the comments posted to the Oakland Press articles about this, I heard you called a variety of really offensive names, like "T-bagger" and "Cretin." And certainly, I got to say that the level of discourse in our community and in our country is really, really very quite poor and very uncivil. I am hoping this will be a teachable moment for all of us to, you know, be more respectful, but I'm also hoping that you do not resign, because the way that we deal with officials that we don't want in government is that we periodically have elections, and then we vote them out of office, and that is the way that we do things. I think there are some people that were disappointed in the outcome of the election, and quite frankly, I think they're exploiting this situation to try to remove you from office, and I hope you stand true. That's, you know, that's, I'm just expressing a viewpoint, so do the right thing. Do not let yourself be bullied by special interest groups. I can assure, yes, yes, now we can say that probably nobody will be using the Q word anymore, and I'm not going to use the G word anymore, and I certainly have never used the F word, you know, with, it ends in a T, not the other F word. So, but I don't think that, to tell you the truth, I don't think you guys are helping your cause by taking the hard-line attitude. You might make better progress among the straights that are more conservative if you were, seemed like you were a little more fair yourself.
Thank you. I would like to call up Paul Beck, Ivan Johnson, Kathleen Martin, John Kuzlis, Michael Donovan, Thomas Giraffa, Ed Grechek, Leslie Thompson.
Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Beck.
I wanted to talk about the transit center. Because of all of the talk and printed evaluations related to the proposed transit center, I thought it might be appropriate just to take a personal investigation and evaluation. So I started by visiting the new Pontiac Transit Center at 11:00 a.m. last Thursday. The parking lot at that location would accommodate about 30 vehicles. There were just four parked when I visited. I later learned that two of those belonged to the Greyhound bus employees who worked at that location. When I approached the door of the building, I had to wait to have one of those Greyhound employees unlock the door so that I could get in. Inside, I picked up an Amtrak route and schedule for the entire U.S. From that publication, I learned there were only three trains daily, southbound toward Detroit, and another three trains out of Detroit, northbound. As it turns out, if I were employed in Detroit and wanted to use the train for transportation there, there's only one morning train at 6:05 a.m. and one returning train at 6:46 p.m. that could be used. The trip takes between 40 and 40 minutes and an hour. I could assume that in the morning, I would park at the station, but then, when arriving downtown in Detroit, I would need either a bus or a taxi to my place of employment, unless I was within walking distance. The next shock for me was when I inquired about the train fare. The agent said they do not sell tickets at the station. Tickets could only be purchased online on the Internet. I checked that out later and learned that the train fare was $12 one way, and tickets must be purchased in advance. I also checked the amenities, or lack thereof, for Birmingham, Royal Oak. And these locations offered no enclosed warming area, no ticket office, no lounge, no ATM, no Wi-Fi, no elevator. All of the "noes" applies to the Pontiac office station as well, except for the enclosed waiting area. As a young engineer, I used to ride the Grand Trunk Western Railroad trains to and from my place of employment. In those days, the trains were frequent, long, and full. The fare daily was 10 cents one way. Some past speakers to the council have indicated the need for a transit center, as if it would be the start of something grand. Let's face it, Detroit is a city with terrible difficulties, with very high unemployment, and has lost more than half of its population from its earlier glory days. What really are the prospects of meaningful work for suburbanites who would commute there from a transit center? Can you imagine starting a business considering such prospects? If some major business venture does evolve, then and only then would commuting be expected. A transit center could serve if work were plentiful, but a transit center will not be the cause of long-term job developing. This Troy Transit Center proposal is much like the bridge to nowhere. This is a boondoggle for a train to nowhere.
Mr. Beck, your time is up. If you could wrap it up, please.
Very well. Some have said that if we don't take this money, it'll go someplace else. If the project is wrong, it's wrong. Perhaps, just perhaps, the city of Troy can become a starting point for the common sense to be restored to our land. I urge the council, back to reality, please reject the transit center. Thank you.
Ivan Johnson.
That was Ivan.
That was Ivan?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Paul wasn't here.
Oh, I see. Then Kathleen Martin?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Martin, and I don't need to say how long I've lived here, but it's been a long time. I have sent you a letter online, and I had a copy with me, and somebody took it, so I'm not going to talk very long. But the focus that I had was a reaction to a comment I saw from a previous meeting from a person who said, "The only people who ride public transportation are muggers." I beg to differ. I've had occasions in my life where I've broken my leg and couldn't drive and had to ride on public transportation. I've also had the good fortune of living in Switzerland, where they have magnificent public transportation, being there for two weeks and being able to ride on trams, trains, boats, and every kind of public transportation you could imagine. In those countries in Europe, they have a concept that they're dedicated to called universal design. Let's design our systems so that they work for everyone. And I speak tonight advocating for our senior citizens and people with disabilities who are not able to drive, and we have to keep that in mind. And I've spoken in detail in my letter. And there's a phenomenal website from Easter Seals that's called Project Action, and I've given all that information. And they even have, and I've sent this to you, a manual for transit authorities on how to create universal design and make transportation work for everyone. One last thing, I'd love the kids to take back to Troy High School, there's another word that people are dedicated to eliminating this year, and it's called retard. That is a word that is also highly derogatory to people with special needs. So let's promise not to have that happen at the high school, because I hear kids say it all the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. John Kuzlis, please.
Since it seems relevant, I've lived in this city all my life, and I'm 41. Madam Mayor, over the past few years, your refrain has been synonymous with the Tea Party, claiming that if given the reins of power, you would restore the limitation on Troy's government as outlined by the U.S. Constitution. This is, of course, grounded in the claim that the Tea Party has the rightful, true understanding of the founding fathers and their vision. This is vague, so I've searched for greater understanding of what the Tea Partiers believe and what they claim the Constitution guarantees. My search led me to an Oakland Press editorial published August 23rd, 2009, in which a Tea Party member stated that "In a free society, we have not only the individual right to think, but to act and live as we choose." The author of that editorial is one Janice Daniels of Troy, Michigan. You continued, quote, "A free-thinking, responsible adult will never infringe upon the right of another free-thinking, responsible adult to live their life the way they choose in peace." So your understanding of the Constitution frees you to demand that others not tell you how to think, act, or live as long as you live within the rule of law. Yet your comment about marriage equality reveals that you do not grant the same courtesy to others. So answer me, Madam Mayor, are we reading the same Constitution? Because the Constitution I read requires us to come together to form a more perfect union and promote domestic tranquility. Because the Constitution I read requires us each, requires us to treat each other equally, regardless of race, creed, color, or orientation. Because the Constitution I read does not disparage the rights reserved to the people, including the right to marry the person you love. I see now that your claimed love of the Constitution is mere sloganeering, a rallying cry for bigotry and foolishness. Yours is a Constitution of hypocrisy, which tells others how to live while claiming superior rights for yourself. Instead of playing lip service to the Constitution and construing it as a weapon to attack those you hate and fear, I suggest you try reading it sometime, and dare I say, putting it into practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Donovan, please. Do you have another speaker?
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Tom Zarafa. I am a Catholic pastoral minister in the Archdiocese of Detroit and have served the Church for 42 years. I am also a resident of Oak Park, but I do a lot of shopping here at Whole Foods Market in Troy and many other stores also, so this city does get my dollars. There's a little fable I heard when I was a child, and that was about a pillow fight that happened. And this child broke the pillow, and the feathers went all over the place. And he went to his father, and his father said, "Well, I want you to pick up every one of those feathers." "But Dad, I can't do that. There's thousands of them, and they're all over the place, and the wind is blowing them." And his father told his son that, "Well, this is what happens when you hurt somebody by name. You cannot pick up those feathers, because they have flown all over." And the slur that was used, and I heard your apology, quote-unquote, earlier today on television, Madam Mayor, and I don't doubt it was sincere. I think it was only sincere in the fact that you got caught. There's a lot of feathers you need to pick up now.